I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I'd like to note that commissioners Morales and Mutsler are excused this evening. Steph, could you please call the roll?
Jeff Chadwick.
Here.
Aiman Collins.
Liz Darrow.
Here.
Joe Ellenboss.
Present.
Lindsey Graham Ellenboss.
Here.
Colton Paltonpope.
Here.
Brad Kelly.
Beamed in.
My Morales is excused, Don Mutsler is excused, Hannah Ordos.
Here.
Joel FitzJordan.
Here.
Andrew Ridding.
Here.
Ms. Prebenstra.
Here.
Rob Stumpf.
Here.
Jennifer Wright.
Here.
Are there any amendments to today's agenda? Seeing none, I will note that Commissioner Morales could not be here tonight, and ask that we move Amendment 11 to the June 12th meeting. And I so.
Well, Madam Chair. If they're going to do that, we won't have, this is a work session, and I would think that just because the proponent is not here, we have the data on it, and we've all, we've all taken a look at that. I, for one, feel that that's a bad move because it puts more stuff at the end than we could get our discussion taken care of tonight. And who knows? Maybe someone in the group after the work session would move a proposal to recommend to the commission that we reject it. And so it's a property of the body, and I don't, for that reason, I think that we make a big mistake by just removing it. That's my opinion.
Heard, and we do have a motion and a second, so would be happy to hear any other thoughts on that.
I just think we've kicked the can down the road so many times that it begins to look kind of silly if we do it one more time. We did set this up this way. Everybody's been properly noticed. I don't see why we can't have the discussion. It's after all, only the committee to hold.
I'll just say that I can understand as the author of the amendment why Commissioner Morales would not want us to discuss it. So, just noting that. Will we have a vote?
I just have to agree with Andrew. We don't do that very often, so I think advantage of it. We kicked that can down the road, so. I think we should keep going with it.
Okay. I mean, there's no final decisions from tonight, and that's an important voice. And we didn't make room for this discussion.
You ladies just talk way too quiet.
Sorry, I'll shout more.
Go ahead.
I'm also going to put on the record, I agree with Andrew, and I absolutely do not want to push this any further. We're all, we have plenty of time to absorb the info as it evolved, we discussed it. I would like to give Commissioner Morales that perspective being here, but since she can't, I think we can go through that process, and she will be here before there's a vote. So I'd like to go along with that today.
Any other comments? Are there any objections to voting on this by consent?
Objection?
Okay.
Because that was a motion, right?
Yep.
And so I'm seeing a lot of people disagreeing with that, so I think we do need to have a local.
Fair enough. Steph, could you call the roll? Aiman Collins.
This is Johnny.
Okay, let me clear, sorry. The motion was to move the discussion on Amendment Number 11 to June 12th, and there was a second. So, yes vote would do that, and a vote would not. Aiman Collins is absent. I think he's going to join by Zoom.
Zoomed tonight.
Can he?
No, we keep it tonight. I mean, because it would never end.
The motion is to move it, so a no would keep it.
Okay.
I guess.
We should be, I think, vote first.
I see. Should we tell him to do something about that point? Should I tell him to accept the promotion? Too modest. Too humble. Yeah, let's come back, yeah, perhaps.
I'm unclear what's happening, there's a total pause here.
Oh, Aiman. We're waiting for Aiman to join on Zoom, but it seems like there's some technical difficulties. So let's move on and come back. Okay. Liz Darrow.
Yes.
Joe Ellenboss.
No.
Lindsey Graham Ellenboss.
No.
Colton Paltonpope.
No.
Brad Kelly.
No.
My Morales. Don Mutsler. Hannah Ordos.
No.
Joel FitzJordan.
No.
Andrew Ridding.
No.
Jessica Reinsta.
No.
Rob Stumpf.
No.
Jennifer Wright.
No.
Doug Chadwick.
No.
Aiman Collins.
Does he know we're voting?
Is he there?
He's, yes.
Aiman, you can speak if you would like to unmute. Yeah, for sure. Okay. So we can have him as excused if we're having issues over there. Okay, so that motion fails 11 to 1 with three excuses. We need a motion to approve the agenda as written. Is there any objection to approving this by consent? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next one, we want a public comment. We'll take all the public comment as one group today. Are there any in-person commenters signed up? There we have Eric Warden, followed by Natalie Chavez and Liz Darrow again.
I have to laugh, Doug has teased me about this so many times. I brought the same poster. You might remember from back in February, I brought this. It's a map of the county, and I was talking about possible future seats on the council. I brought tonight to highlight, not to talk about the same thing I said before, but to mention that when I created this, actually created intentionally to be a little bit irritating. Now, I kind of wanted to keep you in the pants on this issue. I think I succeeded with the colors and the, you know, representation of political parties, the numbers, percents, and so forth. It kind of looks like a board game. And I think that's appropriate because it actually is similar to a game, the way that this system is set up. And the players of the game are you and the county council and the political parties, who use this game to try to control the balance of power on the city council. I don't think that's a good system. And it's frustrating to the voters, and that's why we're here tonight. About half of the voters in the county are frustrated with these two at-large seats. And I wanted to draw a comparison with other seats as well. In every election, even the districts one through five, the elections usually turn out about 50/50. We can use District 3 as an example. When Tyler Bird won there about four years ago, he won by about half the votes plus a few, and his opponent won with about half the votes minus a few. So, as we've all experienced, the day after the election, a lot of people checked the news. People who voted Tyler Bird felt happy, but the other half of people felt frustrated and disappointed. And that's what happens with the at-large seats, but also happens with every other district in the county. And if Jessica Reinsta happens to unseat Tyler Bird in the next election, then again, it'll probably be about 50% plus a few if she wins, and 50% minus a few for Tyler Bird guessing. And about half the people, again, will feel frustrated and disappointed the day after the election. There'll just be a different half of people. And this isn't a very good system. All through the county, we end up with a lot of people feeling frustrated and disappointed. It's not just the at-large, it's all the districts. So, I'd ask you to kind of look at the bigger picture when you're talking about this issue tonight. Of course, I'm here, I've always been advocating for a portion of representation system. These kind of systems have high voter satisfaction in the areas where they are used. In contrast, the system that we have now, which is low voter satisfaction and a lot of frustration. Thank you for your time.
And I want to say, I'm sorry I didn't catch that much. These referring to naming political candidates and predicting futures, that kind of thing is not allowed in this space. But appreciate the comment. Do you have other speakers?
I found it enlightening, I didn't know that.
Well, right, I think we need to speak in hypotheticals, we're not allowed to use actual candidates. Go ahead, Aiman.
Isn't it, okay, isn't this public comment?
Yeah.
So why don't they have?
Commissioner Ellenboss, do you want to expand on that, or do you need to do it?
Why what?
Why they're not allowed to name candidates.
I don't know the preference, I just believe. Yeah, I was not allowed to. I hear it at the beginning of every meeting with the elected officials.
Yes, with the elected officials, yeah. Okay.
Hello, my name is Natalie Chavez. Thank you for listening to public comments this evening. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the Charter Review Commission meeting on Monday, May 12th, but I sent all of you an email, which stated, in case you didn't read it, stated, quote, "I hi Charter Review Commissioners. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the meeting this evening. However, as I stated at the meeting on Thursday, April 10th during my public comment, I'm opposed to ranked choice voting. As I mentioned at the meeting that evening, it will cause confusion amongst voters, mistrust in the voting process, and division, which we already have enough of. In addition, ranked choice voting will be more time-consuming, cost more money, disenfranchise voters, and frankly, it's just a bad idea. Please vote no on ranked choice voting," unquote. It also sounds like Pierce County implemented ranked choice voting for a while, and then repealed it for various reasons, and probably because it wasn't working out. More, most concerning, however, is that it sounds like some of you chose out-of-state Republicans from DC, Massachusetts, and Utah to speak in favor of ranked choice voting at May 12th's meeting. As a lifelong Democrat, I find that concerning because it's causing more division in our community. Local Republicans have been speaking out against ranked choice voting, so why are out-of-state individuals being called in to our community to speak out about this issue? Hopefully, the voices in our Waukum community carry more weight than voices from out-of-state and from outside of our community. And in regards to at-large county council positions, as I stated at the meeting on April 10th, if you really want to give conservatives more of a voice in the Waukum community, then you will approve Proposed Amendment 9, which would eliminate at-large county council districts, reducing the size of the council from seven members to five members. The two county council at-large positions are filled by liberals who live within the city of Bellingham currently, and for as long as I can remember. When was the last time that conservatives filled the two at-large positions and actually lived out in the county? So if you really want to give conservatives more of a voice, then you will approve Amendment 9 or make a change to that amendment to have at least one of the two at-large positions be filled by a conservative who lives in the county and not within the city of Bellingham. Conservatives have been, have not been well-represented in many areas in our Waukum community for a very long time now. Thank you for your time.
That's from how Rosemary Van Bee, followed by Steve Oliver.
My turn. Okay, y'all, I get nervous, I don't care if I do know who all of y'all know. Okay, I would like to thank all of you for your service on this commission. I haven't done that before. A lot of the research and ideas that have come to this commission to consider and decide whether to put them on the, for the people to decide. You've traveled to several areas of the county. A lot of these areas, I would have never gone to had I not gone to the meetings there. Enlightening. GPS is great. Many of you know, the discussion that I've been attending these meetings for has finally come up before the commission. Changing the county council from seven to five, eliminating the two at-large positions. First, this would save the county approximately $150,000 in salary a year, but more importantly, give equal representation to each of the five districts. We all have different ideas as what constitutes equal. But I think we all believe in democracy, the right to choose our representation. I believe, I became a resident of this county 13 years ago, and all of this time, the county council representation has been primarily Bellingham people. I know a lot of y'all are Bellingham people, but this is the issue. The districts were changed from three to five in 2015, hopefully to give the other county residents more representation. But adding the two at-large still kept the representation coming from primarily areas of Districts 1 and 2 because their combined numbers outnumbered the other areas. But also, since this time, many of the outlying area towns have grown. In the upcoming election, in any upcoming election, representation may come from other districts besides 1 and 2 with these towns growing. Changes dynamics of the council because of the population changes. But that's not the case so far. I have been told this probably would not pass since the beginning. But I started, when I started attending these meetings. In fact, my husband told me that my voice will not be heard, which is a shame that anyone in this county or state should think that their voice would not be heard, or at least considered. Democracy is a great word, and I have heard it discussed many times at these commission meetings. I hope that those discussions, these words, understand that that's all I'm asking for, the right to vote on the issue. It might not pass, but that would be the will of the voters and not this commission. The people's right to vote is all I'm asking for.
Steve Oliver.
Thank you. I'm just here to briefly talk about County Charter Amendment 10. You know, this has been a, this has been a difficult proposal to follow because we're about 540 degrees from where the discussion and proposal started. And, you know, it's, you know, it's been difficult to understand what the, you know, what the underlying, you know, policy statement is, you know, behind this proposal when it, you know, seemingly has changed, you know, so many times. I mean, you know, I think that, you know, I think the president's, you know, tariff policies are probably about the only thing that's changed more than this proposal. And, you know, you know, it seems to me that, you know, I mean, the knee, you know, the knee's been bent, you know, for the prosecuting attorney to continue to use, you know, the same methodology that, you know, seems to have inflated the county executive's salary over the years, and leaves the rest of the elected officials with, you know, something less than that. And it uses, you know, and it uses a term of, you know, may not exceed the currently published salaries of the highest-paid counterparts among, you know, any counties, less than King County. You know, currently published salaries is kind of a, kind of a difficult term because, you know, I mean, the decision about my, you know, my salary right now is made two years ago. You know, so, you know, when the salary commission convenes, you know, they're going to be, you know, they're going to be hamstrung by having to use, you know, decisions that were made, you know, one year ago, two years ago. There's at least one county that sets their elected official salaries five years at a time. You know, and they're trying to look into the future. So it seems like, you know, there's some inequity here, and, you know, and it just seems to me, you know, there's a level of granularity here that I'm just really not so sure really even belongs in the charter. And I think I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Can I ask Steve a question?
What?
This is not on what you just said, or what you just talked about. But is it true? I seem to hear and understand from the various conversations that take place that all these fund balances that you have, that you have invested, that you appear to be doing a pretty good job because you're getting a pretty good return. But is it true, and is it actually lawful, for all of that, all of those dedicated funds earnings to go into the general fund to be squandered in any way, shape, or form with no responsibility to utilize those funds that the public have given for a specific purpose? And they have earned money. I'm kind of rambling with the question because I'm trying to set the standard. You get what I, you're smarter than I am, so I know you get, you get the question. Has the legality of that ever been challenged? And just as an example, about how, how much is it per year that goes into the general fund that is earned by those funds?
Well, I'll tell you, in 2024, it was a little bit over, over $10 million. Now, there are, you know, there are certain funds that the investment of those funds are restricted by, you know, by state statute, where the statute says these funds can only be invested for their own benefit. And, and we do that. The county council also has the authority to say, "We want these funds to be invested for their own benefit." You know, probably the largest example, you know, of today's time is, you know, the Healthy Children's Fund. Those funds are invested for its own benefit, for the Healthy Children's Fund. It doesn't go into the, to the general fund. We actually were, we actually were challenged on this topic probably 15 years ago. And we kind of came, you know, you know, came to a point where we couldn't come to an agreement with the state auditor about it, so we solicited an opinion from, from the Attorney General. The Attorney General did, you know, side with our position, which was, you know, absent some direction in state law or some direction from the county council, that those funds could be invested for the benefit of, of the County General Fund, which is kind of the, you know, the default language in the statute. It says, absent any other direction, you can invest these funds for the benefit of the general fund. Answer it.
Are there any other questions? No more are signed up. Are there any signed up online? One sec, I'm just curious if there's any signed up online. Do you have some online? Looks like we first. Let's hold off on that, go ahead. Mr. Strumler, let's thank her.
All right, thank you. My name's Mark Strumler, I'm a lifelong resident, Waukum County, live in District 4. Thank you for your service again tonight. About six months ago, I called up Commissioner Joe Ellenboss, and I says, "Hey, can we get together and talk?" He being one of the three representatives from my district. And that morning, we talked about a lot of things. One of them, and I brought up to him, I says, "Hey, what do you think about five council members versus seven?" And we had, we had a great conversation about that at the Hilltop. No, not the Hilltop.
Our diner.
Our diner, sorry. And been thinking a lot about that, I'm pleased to see that it is on the agenda as one of the proposed amendments. And I, I've heard people say, "Well, we need more representation in the county." I don't think that's a great argument for two more positions on the county council. I think that's a different issue if your representative is not listening or being active. I don't think that should be made up by two others. I think that's a different problem. So I understand that there's an organization out there called Fair Vote. Don't know much about them. But when I think about that term, and I think about five districts in Waukum County, I don't see how anybody can rationalize having more than five representatives, one from each of those districts, who, or the districts are, you know, broken up by population. So I would ask that, as you think about this, set aside parties, set aside politics, set aside rural, or urban, or Bellingham, or the county. That's, to me, that's not really the, the subject. It's what is fair? Five districts, five votes, or five council members. I would love to hear an argument that can justify something more fair than that. So as this proceeds in your, in your work, I ask you to set aside all that other stuff and think about what is fair because I think that is what we all want in the end. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you. It looks like Mr. Westerfield has a comment as well. Apologize to the folks online, I didn't realize we weren't done here.
Is someone waiting online?
Go ahead.
John Westerfield, lifelong resident of Waukum County, and at one time or another, I've managed to annoy almost every one of you. And that's my job. I'm speaking in favor of Proposed Amendment 9 for the reasons Josh mentioned, and the reasons that are maybe not so often mentioned as simple. He mentioned fairness, I'll talk some more about fairness. Washington State has been controlled by the Democratic Party since the mid-'80s. No party should have that much influence and power in any area, but it's real. So here in Waukum County, we have the opportunity to go back to a situation where we'll have more fairness by having exactly the same number of people on the council as we have districts. Today, I heard a speaker talk about the expected growth in Waukum County. In the next 20 years, Bellingham alone expects and plans to have more people move into that than the rest of the county put together. Once again, shifting the balance of power in this county further and further and further towards the city of Bellingham. City of Bellingham is not the whole county. Those of us who live outside the city of Bellingham recognize that we don't have much of a voice. So really, there is no reason to have two additional council members. The only reason they're there was to give the additional power in the, in the, in the council to the city of Bellingham. So please, as has been suggested, think in terms of fairness, think in terms of what makes sense, think in terms of relinquishing some of this grasp that we have in this state and in this county of one political, political party being in charge of everything and requiring everybody's lives. being in charge of everything and requiring everybody's lives be wrapped around their principles. It just shouldn't be that way. Five districts, five councilmen, that's all it takes. Thank you.
So up first I have Rachel Nugent, followed by Misty Flowers. Rachel, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Rachel Nugent. I'm a homeowner in Waukam County. I have a home out near Glacier. And, uh, thank you to the members of the commission for their work and, uh, on behalf of all of us, appreciate the opportunity for input. I speak, uh, in opposition to amendment nine. I don't think it is a good idea to eliminate the at-large seats. In fact, I think we would do well to have more at-large seats so that we are not as fragmented and divided as a voting populace, because having at-large seats helps us speak to each other as neighbors and colleagues and people who are trying to find places of agreement amongst ourselves. And having lines dividing us, um, and district lines just encourages people to stick to their own beliefs and the people who believe the same thing rather than talking more to people who might not have the same beliefs and finding areas of agreement. So I think that, uh, we would do well to keep the at-large seats and, uh, I don't have a, a strong opinion about how many seats, but I don't want to see the at-large seats disappearing. Thank you very much for your time.
Next I have Misty Flowers.
Good evening, Commission. Thank you for your time and I also appreciate, uh, you know, provide input. Um, there's been some great comments tonight and, um, I would agree with those who are really recognizing the value of us seeing across the aisle and finding ways to work together. I think it's been so refreshing for me, um, as part of the public and being able to give input to have the commission come together and to watch you work together and find ways to communicate because of the fact that you have to have a super majority to bring anything forward. So I find huge amount of value in that. I think that that really helps our, our community. So whatever decisions that you make tonight, I hope that you do understand that the more that you work together um, and find agreement in how to benefit the most people in Waukam County is really how you make the most difference. So thank you all for your time and service to our community. And I really appreciate that you are finding ways to work together. I've seen several amendments come together that have been bipartisan and it's been, um, it, it brings hope that maybe we, we can see differences and still find ways to work together. So thank you for your time.
Next I have Alan McConkey. Alan, go ahead.
Uh, hello. Um, yeah, I, my name is Alan McConkey. I grew up here in Waukam County, live in District Two. I'm the, the founder of the local Fair Vote chapter. Um, definitely part of a much larger organization, but we have a lot of people on the ground who are excited about ranked choice voting. And I'm also really excited to see so many people excited by the concept of fairness. And I, I really do agree with most of these criticisms of the at-large voting. Um, at-large voting is not something that our group is excited about. We think it's not fair. Um, if you look at how Congress is selected, the Supreme Court actually struck down um, at-large districts for, for Congress, because a lot of states in the South, um, up until the sixties were using that so that they would have all of their, their congresspeople elected at large. So a slim white majority could win all the seats and keep any, um, African Americans from getting elected. But the thing is, the only thing that is about as bad is district-only voting. And everything that people were saying about feeling that an at-large seat is unfair, that a slim majority who lives in Bellingham could override a small minority who lives out in the rural part of the county. All of those things are true for each of those districts. If you look at each individual district. We could look at District Four. There's probably 40% of that district is Democrat and yet they have no voice. They don't get to, um, influence who gets elected from that district. So if we're really looking at fairness, neither of these systems are that great. The at-large seats are not fair, but neither are these, uh, single winner uh, council seats. So we, we really, from Fair Vote, we think we should think more broadly. We should look at how people are doing things around the world with proportional representation. Rank choice voting can do that. And everything that people feel like they're looking for fairness, if you look at the system for how fair, for, um, how fairly the results are allocated with the proportional representation, every group of voters has their fair shot at getting their fair share of seats. It's as simple as that. It's super simple and it's super logical. It makes sense that we should have a distribution of seats on the council in the same proportions as the distribution of what voters want. Um, so I encourage you to keep thinking about, I know you're gonna be looking at that in a future meeting, but keep thinking about uh, proportional rank choice voting as the solution to what we really, what everyone is asking for when they are asking for these, um, the elimination of that large seats. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we're gonna move on to the discussion part of our committee of the whole meeting, starting with amendment proposal number nine. Um, Commissioner Allen Boss would like to get us started by speaking to your amendment.
Would it be okay if, you know, since I list sometimes and I'm not clear in reading, could, could I get a volunteer to read a letter at a certain point of my presentation to you guys? Does that meet with the will of the body and will the chair show authorization? Is that lady who claimed to be a lifelong Democrat?
Natalie.
Is she still here? I liked her voice, so she was willing to read it. It's, it's not immediate, but when, when I get to that point, uh, if you could just read it through to this point.
But not now?
Not now. Thank you. Okay, it's, it's a way of introduction. It's, it's fair to say that my reason to propose this amendment came about by virtue of many folks. Mr. Strumler was the first official individual to talk with me about it. But many folks have talked to me about it and I, for a long time, have been concerned about the issue. Mainly because one man, one vote gets us to a situation where we at least have to divide up our various venues such that they are even in their voting capability. And each one of those, we have striven as a commission and as voters in the county to have those representatives elected within the district. Now, a commission back in ninety-five or maybe it was eighty-five put on the ballot to have them elected in the primaries from their own district. And that passed. But the council in their wisdom didn't like that. And so, I mean, it passed with about 75% support. The council said, well, they had an ordinance. They conducted an ordinance, had a public hearing on it, put it before the voters again. And with tremendously different wording and this particular thing's become pretty important as to how our ballot titles and the wording gets through to the public. The presentation passed to go to rescind that and go back to election in the district at large. It only passed by one and a half percent, if I recall. So when the commission got together in 2015, it became an important concept, one of the most important concepts that then existed. And it was, yes, there was, there was one more. It was the exact flip of this makeup. There was one more Republican than there was Democrat on that. But on that particular issue, it was not uniform that that was the case. There was a gentleman by the name of Eli Markowitz who voted with us pretty regularly on that stuff. And, uh, and so we almost had the super majority that was talked about. Todd Donovan played with us on that particular situation. But all of those things, I'm saying these things because they're important to know that as the commission met, then met, like we meet, it was a concept of pretty significant importance that the voters of each district at least elect at the primaries, the potential candidates on which they were going to be voting on in the general. Well, during the course of this, Red Brown and Barry Buchanan would sit over there and said, well, they never testified. But they were, during the course of it, they were there waiting to participate. We kept thinking they were going to participate, but they did not. Instead, we finished up our amendments, which by the way, are amendments of that particular commission. And they weren't just Republican. They were Republican and Democrat. It took Republicans and Democrats to, to support those for them all to pass. All eight that that body submitted passed. But lo and behold, we turned them into the council and what's the council do? After all their time had run, the council went ahead and decided to submit two particular amendments. Now, there's nothing in the amendments that we submitted talking about five districts. That was the council that did that. And they, they did that by their thinking they could divide the county up in a manner that created a greater voting block that was not necessarily conservative. And oh, by the way, up to that point, for thirty or forty years, we did have one at large, but they doubled it. Because it was obvious that the voting power of the city gave them additional benefit. And so they created then two at large. Now, that's the history. And I'm willing to answer any questions as it relates to the history, any challenges of whether that's correct or not. But as a sitting individual who helped write the original charter and served on all of them and had heard all of the testimony, I mean, you've had plenty of evidence that I'm not the brightest bulb in the room. But I have a fairly decent memory and I have a pretty good concept about what we end up doing. So when the council said, well, we're gonna submit Charter Amendments Nine and Ten, I thought this isn't right. And I started writing letters to them asking for a variety of bits of information. And I didn't get any response to those letters. None. I asked for the minutes related to their appropriateness. I asked for the situations that it related to whether or not they could have, they could actually declare an emergency and it was not legal to declare an emergency, but they did it anyway. Uh, there were no minutes provided. They did it by consent without appropriate actions. And so all these challenges were made to the council at that time. Now, if I could have
Natalie.
Yes, if I could have Natalie, if she would just read the, the letter, please. This would, this would be a letter after all the timeframes had passed uh, for them to respond. And the, and the declaration was that it was gonna go on the ballot.
So this was written August tenth, two thousand and fifteen to chair members of Waukam County Council regarding apparent council misuse of consent process. As a citizen, I expect some response or acknowledgement from my government. You may recall that on one and sixteenth July, I provided a request as to the minimum evidence related to notice and minutes that demonstrate compliance with the rules that govern you. This specific to the charter amendments your body contemplates. I've received no response from any member of your body. Rather, you, your apparent actions indicate an outright violation of several of the regulations to which you are bound to adhere. Can I enforce this? No. But I remain certain there are others, both private and public, that should and most likely will pursue these matters to their resolution. There appear to be at least four bodies of regulation that apply directly to what you attempt to undertake. The net result of reviewing same outrightly deny your current attempts as they are invalid. Hence, the county auditor has no authority to place your currently proposed amendments on the ballot. Not wanting to appear obtuse or overbearing, let me walk you through the rules that you and your council appear to avoid. While I'm just a layman, the ruling documents are pretty clear. Number one, the charter under eight point two one amendment by commission, eight point two two amendments by initiative of the people and eight point two two amendments by the council specifically allows for these three different means, but nowhere does it contemplate, of nowhere does it contemplate of give permissive language for a combination of any two. It would appear to this voter that an attempt was made to utilize the provision of eight point two two, but failing to meet the signature threshold, said people approached the council at the last minute as the commission was submitting its work under eight point two one and petitioned the council to submit under eight point two three. As one of the freeholders that wrote the charter, there was no support for nor implementing language to undertake what you attempt. Specifically, the provisions of eight point two two and eight point two three were to cover perceived needed changes that came within the ten years between Charter Review Commission considerations. Please review minutes of said conversations as to intent. Number two, the charter under eight point two zero in some manner attempts to address this necessity for clarification and non-confusing means for public consideration during the voting process. When it states, quote, "If more than one amendment is submitted on the same ballot, they shall be submitted in such manner that the people may vote for or against the amendments separately," unquote. This would tend to indicate that your proposed, quote, ex post facto, unquote, language in amendment, in amendment ten would violate the provisions of the charter. It is also questionable as to the timing of the, quote, superseding language, unquote, as included per requirement of WCC. It being over two weeks since my request, as noted below, for the notice and subsequent minutes of the meeting held to obtain the consent you listed on the late June introduction of ordinances to propose charter amendments for July seventh hearing, I am assuming the failure to produce is an indication of their non-existence. Further, it appears that you again use this tactic to propose additional matters, ostensibly in the same format. I reiterate my, I reiterate my request. Where is the notice and subsequent record as required by law? Sensing your continued avoidance of perceived duty, I feel compelled to enlist the Exec, Prosecutor and Ethics Commission for immediate assistance in this request. As previously stated, I leave any official challenge to regulating or investigating authority for actions or penalties to others, but as I'm sure you are aware, the apparent disregard by your body for the rules that control your actions is not likely to be ignored by your constituency. I may be contacted as listed above.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, to take that, the content of that letter, I want you to know that you could search high and low in Waukam County. And you would find no record of the Ethics Commission responding. You would find no record of prosecutor responding. You would find no record of any coming. You would find no record of any county council member responding. You would find no record of the county executive responding. And much like when we submitted a request on the data as the first resolution that we sent, we have not had any official response to this. I didn't even have the benefit of any one of them talking with me. It was, it was not undertaken. And here is the nuts and bolts of it. The eight members, the, the issue of the eight amendments that the Charter Review Commission submitted were pretty clear as to what their intent was. It was to, on the ones specifically where we were narrowing to the districts, the right to decide who their candidates were. And that's what a group of citizens, so when I refer in that letter to eight point two two, they were attempting to override that. They didn't get enough signatures. And so in the beginning of July, they went to the county council and said, can you please bail us out? And you guys pass an ordinance as a release to this. It was too late, but they went ahead and did it anyway. And it was out of that action that came the five districts that need to redistrict and the second at-large positions. It's my position, and I believe any legal review would so indicate. So that's why I, I take the position that due to illegal actions on the part of the council, improper submission to the voters in a format that violated their own rules. If you were to take a look at the instructions on, on those items, Charter Amendments nine and ten, the wording did conflict with the wording and intents of at least three of the, of the eight amendments that the county, that the commission submitted. And the attempt to piggyback on, and they used the language, that this was to help enhance the commission's submission of eight amendments. So we end up with this situation that's in Congress. Now, I've taken as much time as I wish to take of you in discussion of this. I've indicated that during the course of, of, of our conversation, our limited conversation on it, that I'm not necessarily stuck on this resolution of the matter. If there was some way where they could be divided with one in urban Bellingham and the other in the balance of the county, I would be just as happy with that. If, well, that's not true. I wouldn't be just as happy with it, but it could meet, it could meet the criteria as listed by one of the speakers today of accomplishing that. If the decision was, well, we're, we really need to have seven council members, and we instead go for seven districts, ask the public if they want to have seven districts, and eliminate the at-large positions that way because each district would be represented by someone from that district. That could work for me as well. I'm not sure which form is the best. But clearly, there is no way that a man, a manner which consistently, you have to, you have to take a look at what the record demonstrates. And the record demonstrates that those at-large positions have always voted with the liberal side, always, every time. Which begins to give you an indication if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. So I'm almost positive that this particular issue does not have the support of anyone to the left. Because it would, it would create more of a balance in Waukesha County. And, and quite frankly, politically, that's not desired. I understand that. But to, once again, the people should decide. But if this body doesn't go, if the indication is that we're not going to have, we're not going to be able to achieve the ten votes to put it before the public, I wish to have this issue die. Just like I think if you can't demonstrate, I hope it's an example, for issues like rank choice voting, if we can't have ten votes, let's let that die. And anything else that falls in that category. Okay? That's, that's my presentation on it. And, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Natalie, for reading for me.
I just have a couple of follow-up questions for clarification, because I'm trying to figure out mathematically. We have a member of the public state that having two districts from Bellingham disproportionately represents a voting block. But two out of five is not a majority. So I'm trying to understand how then that would be fair to go to five districts if we're presuming, and I think it's a big leap of logic to presume that three, four, and five are all conservative. I don't think that pencils out, as someone else said. It could be up to forty-nine percent, and we wouldn't necessarily know that. But I'm just trying to figure out how districts one and two are disproportionately electing someone if there's three other districts. Like, can you explain that to me? It just doesn't make sense.
Well, there are those much smarter than me, and I've heard testify to that particular effect. But, um, we know that it, it's a combination of the, the districts having one and two being the, the lion's share of the voters in one and two are, are to the left of center. When you take the, the location where those individuals come from, the, the at-large positions, it's most logical that they are going to be themselves to the left of center. But I'm not going to try and argue that particular point. That's not, that's not my purpose in saying this. I'm, I'm saying that if logic isn't involved and rationale isn't involved, performance is what I'm citing. And the performance is that it has always been. And so the presumption is that it always will be. That, that, that's my answer to your question, is that's what I can answer.
Not so much a question, I just wanted to address the merits on this from some learnings I've heard. First of all, I want to point out the simple fact that anyone, anywhere can run for any of the at-large seats. And proof of the pudding is right in this room. Hannah Orros, for instance, is not from Bellingham, but ran for the at-large position for that in the last election. So, you know, it's not, it's not as if it were constrained in that way. The other thing I want to say here, though, is that for me, as I've said this before, it's very important that for any geographical entity such as Waukesha County, we after all are representing Waukesha County here, that if a majority votes one way in Waukesha County, and when I say in Waukesha County, I mean, I'm in the county too. And I do object when people say I'm not in the county just because I live in Bellingham. I pay taxes like everybody else in this county, county taxes. So please don't tell me I'm not in the county. What you really mean by that is I'm not in the unincorporated areas. Okay, that's what's really meant from that. A lot of people, most of the people who've spoken in here saying they're from the county, they're actually from the unincorporated areas. And if you look at that, that's a minority of the population. Most, most of the people in this county live in incorporated areas. And so anyways, when it comes down to the, a vote that's county-wide, as happens every two years, for electing a county council, if that vote, say, is sixty percent for one party, it shouldn't depend on where the boundary lines are drawn. It should be that that party gets to govern. It should never be that the party with the forty percent gets to have the majority on the county council. That is just a basic principle of democracy that I'm never willing to, to, to let go. The other thing I would point out is that the two, the two at-large seats essentially guarantee as best we can, given that we don't have a proportional system, they guarantee that whichever party does get that sixty percent is going to have a majority, as it should in the county council. That's what it guarantees. But by the same token, things don't stay the same in politics ever, and, and there are surprises that come along. And let's suppose this county goes back to where it once was, majority Republican for a while. If, if it does that, well, then by the same token, these at-large seats go to the Republicans, and that guarantees them the majority on the county council. So it really goes both ways, honestly, on us. And it's very important that throughout, we guarantee not only one person, one vote, but equal weight to every vote. And nobody should be thought of as less of just because of where they live in the county. We're all Waukesha County residents, all of us, and we all count the same. So that's why, I'm not in favor of doing that. I've said I'm open to other ideas that would lead to proportionality. But, and, and, you know, and that, and I know, I know the other side that want to talk about that. But I'm saying, you know, I would totally support something that was more proportional, and it would be ultimately more fair, particularly if we were to pick up District three and then District five, you know, and that would really be, from a proportional standpoint, be horribly unfair to the minority party. Because they would be getting less of the proportion on the council than they deserve. But given that that's, I sense that's, I'm not sensing an openness to having that on the table. You know, the, the only protection we have against minority rule are those two at-large seats, which can swing either way, depending on which way the county as a whole is swinging.
Commissioner, did I see your hand now? Insurance, where did I see your hand? Yeah. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ellenboss, for that backstory and history. I, I heard you say that there hadn't been legal review or anyone got back to you from legal on your concerns that you submitted in two thousand and fifteen. Has our legal counsel reviewed the proposal, or have you had legal review of it since? Is there any feedback from legal counsel on that at this time?
No.
I know that Kellen is online tonight, but I don't know if that question is about the commission's legal. If Kellen wants to say anything about that, or just in general. Kellen's here, right?
You okay?
Oh, hi.
Hello. Sorry for not being there in person. Um, I, I haven't looked in detail at the amendment. I, I wasn't asked to, but I didn't see anything that jumped out at me when I reviewed it that would lead to a legal challenge. I, I can't speak to what happened in two thousand and fifteen. That was before my time, so I'm not sure what happened back then.
Mr. Charlie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may do so, Commissioner Musler could be here, but he submitted a statement that he asked to be read to the record. So I'll go ahead and do that now. From Commissioner John Musler, Chair of Council Members and Fellow Citizens, I am in full support, place before the voters of the proposal to eliminate the two at-large county council positions resulting in a five-member council instead of the current seven-member structure. This recommendation is grounded in data and a desire for greater government efficiency of Washington State's thirty-nine counties, thirty-two operated as code counties, each governed by three commissioners and no elected county executive. In these counties, both legislative and executive responsibilities are handled by just three elected officials. In contrast, Waukesha County currently has eight elected legislative and executive officials, seven council members, in parentheses, five district-based and two at-large, and an elected executive. The proposed structure, five council members plus the executive, would reduce this number to six. Even with this reduction, Waukesha County would still have twice as many elected officials in these roles as the vast majority of the counties in our state. Turning to Washington's seven charter counties, five have five council members. Only King County with nine and Waukesha County with seven exceed that number. In short, thirty-seven of thirty-nine counties in Washington are effectively governed by three to five elected council or commission members. Waukesha and King remain the exceptions. Some have raised concerns about the cost of new charter proposals, such as rank choice voting, the establishment of a performance auditor, or the creation of an OMSB office. While these initiatives have merit, I believe it's also responsible to identify cost savings. By reducing the council from seven to five members, the county could save an estimated two hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually in salaries, benefits, staffing, training, and office-related expenses. It is my hope that the commission will embrace a bipartisan position toward leaner and more effective government and support Commissioner Joe Ellenboss's proposal. Thank you for your attention and thoughtful consideration. Respectfully submitted, John Musler, Waukesha County Charter Review Commissioner.
Go ahead, Mr. Stone.
All right. I'm gonna have a different take on this. I, I one hundred percent think this should go away, but I, I, for the reason I agree with Joe's proposal. I think for the money, a hundred and sixty thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand in benefits, that's a huge savings. I don't think we're getting anything for the money. I don't think you guys can argue that. I, I really couldn't care less about the party stuff. You guys, liberals are winning hands down. We need to do better. That's all, right? We're losing fair and square. Everybody's talking about fair. Get the voters out, right? So that part doesn't matter to me. The part that matters to me is I think those two seats are doing nothing for us. It's money wasted. I think you guys are getting your representation. You guys, you guys are telling us you're gonna be, it's gonna be a blue county, so let's see it. Let's go. You know, we have to do better and stop that. That's my, my take. But I think these two at-large seats are doing nothing but driving back and forth to Seattle to copy what they're doing down south in King County and Thurston County, and not doing anything for our county. So I think we should at least put it to the people to decide this, at least give them a chance to vote on it.
Mr. Stone, I hear what you're saying, and there's, considering what you're talking about. As the person who lives in District three, I would say that having people in place when there's a council member who's not as active, it's been really helpful sometimes to have the at-large people in place. So I would just say that as like another point. And then I do think that there's merit to having people like thinking about the whole county and not just like for one piece. And then you were saying the liberals aren't getting anything for their money. I think it's about the people, like it's not about us, it's about like, are those council members like providing value? And if I were looking at like the council members providing value, I would for sure like say that like tie in that there is value to it, that those votes are doing. That's just some thoughts in response to what you had to say, but I do. Go ahead, Mr. Stone.
In response to the bad council member that you're saying, oh, do better voting, pick a better person next time, right? That, that's, that's the way it's supposed to work. That's, that's how it's supposed to work. You're supposed to vote one person in, and if they suck, you vote them out. That's how it's supposed to, not have to have somebody else as a backup from a different district that's going to come out and represent. They're not even going to be from your area, right? I just think it comes back to voting better, making better choices. If you don't like the person that's in there, vote them out next time.
Mr. Stone, go ahead. So if you are saying that I'm like from a liberal So if you are saying that I'm like from a liberal perspective, I think.
I'm not saying anything like that.
Okay, so I think we've worked together for a while and you know that like I try to really consider all the points, even though like, yes, I do, that is like beside, but I'm not like, I want to hear all of the voices. And I would also say that like in District Three, it may well be now, but has been very close to fifty-fifty. But we didn't let that. It's nice to have like, I don't know, it's just nice to have more people representing that than just one person. So if you're saying like elect someone else, well, I did get to vote for the at-large votes. So they do represent me when I talk to them. Thank you for your thoughts.
Go ahead.
With the exception of councilmen here and commissioner there, I attend more county council meetings than anyone in the room unless you're all doing it on Zoom and never speaking. Reality of it is, in spite of the comments that Commissioner Redding made about the opportunity to change it, the reality of it is the vote is four to three, four to three, four to three, four to three, all damn night at every meeting you go to. It's four to three, four to three, all the time, which proves the point that the rest of us in the county, unincorporated part of the county, are not fully represented because nobody votes for us except the three council members that we elected. So to suggest that it's fair the way it is is not accurate. Thank you.
I have something to say about that, too. I think like assuming that like all of unincorporated Lockham County is conservative is also like, it's really changing in our county. And as someone, I like teach in Blaine, so I'm in District Five all the time, and I live in unincorporated Lockham County in District Three. And I do see, you know, we have a mix of people everywhere in our county. So I just wanted to point that out.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ellenboss.
So in Andrew's response, he talked about a different form of, I can't remember the precise term, proportions, yeah. Do we have, do we have any desire as a body to take a look at the concept of not concerning ourselves with conservative or liberal, but the city versus the non-city? So that if the at-large positions, if there could be created a way, and I, and anything is possible, the delineation could not just be the boundary of Bellingham and the rest of the county, obviously, that's, we have to get around that corner. But is this, is this body willing to look at that as a substitute for doing away with the positions? Because let me be clear. I maybe didn't articulate this well enough in the beginning. Well, it may be my preference to do away with them, and there's some argument for that. My goal is to get what appears to be what the public request is, and that is recognition for the non-incorporated area. And so the proposal, the alternative proposal has been out there by Joseph, one be designated for the city of Bellingham and one for the balance of the county. Does that idea apply any better with anybody than where we are? And then that's the purpose of committee of the whole, is to voice our opinions as it relates to that.
Commissioner Woodston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was intrigued by this concept of, you know, what would it look like if we had five districts and then two at-large positions were incorporated into like, into different larger districts? I would definitely invite staff counsel to share some of the same information. I would, my understanding is that state law is very explicit that if we're gonna have districts in any form, they have to be equal in population. They don't, it doesn't really contemplate the concept of a tiered system where we have like a, almost like minor system of five districts and then a major system of two districts. And that would likely be in, in my state law, but would definitely direct that question as well towards staff counsel to weigh in if I missed anything there.
Yeah, I have looked at that in a couple of times when various commissioners have asked me about it, and I just haven't seen a way to fit sort of a two-tiered districting system into the redistricting requirements of state law, which do require every district to be equal in size and geographically contiguous and have other requirements like that. I, I don't see a way to do that two-tiered system and still follow the redistricting rules as they're laid out in state law.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Commissioner Joe Ellenboss's point, and we've discussed this in other sub-meetings where we talked about different votings, and there's two things that continually come up from the public when they speak, whether they're in favor of or opposed to ranked choice voting, how they feel about the districts. There's two things that always come to light. People will bring up proportional representation, but they also bring up fair representation. And they're nuanced, they're different. So in some of our discussions, how do we do that? Like Joe was saying, one of the things that I know a previous commission has suggested, A, the at-large be split. You know, one at-large is for rural, one is for the city of Bellingham, or one is for unincorporated in the city. Commissioner Redding's correct. There are, the minority of the county lives in unincorporated Lockham County. When we talk about incorporated, we're not just talking about the city of Bellingham, we're talking Lynn, Verdell, Blaine. A lot of people in this county live in those cities. So trying to come up with a methodology or a way to do it so that it comports with state law, because Ken, you can't divide those lines with districting where they favor a political party. You can't cut through geographic. There's a list of things. But one of the things that I've discussed with some of my fellow commissioners, you know, on both sides, is basically a north and a south at-large position. And using the current five districts we have, and, you know, when we talk about, Andrew's right. We all live in Lockham County, whether you're in Bellingham or not. But Bellingham drives the vote in Lockham County. I've said for years as a county employee, funding is always very Bellingham-centric. Services are always very Bellingham-centric. There are more people that live outside the city limits of Bellingham in Lockham County than live in, in, in the city limits. That's just a fact. So leaving the five districts, I thought one of the things for a southern at-large would be, you know, the southern at-large has districts one and two and half of District Three, and you use the forty and the forty-second legislative districts to divide that. I checked with the auditor's office, and if you split District Three that way, it's almost an equal split. So the issue of equal population with districts and those geographic areas that don't necessarily favor anybody, because again, there's conservatives and liberal folks throughout Lockham County. In Bellingham and the east parts of Lockham County, you know, that you can't say any, any one area is red or blue. It's just changed that way. So that was my thought. I know I've talked to Kellen, and I think he's chewed on it a little bit. My reading of some of the RCW, I don't know that necessarily. I think it's possible what I'm discussing, but it would certainly need more legal review to see if it violates the redistricting rules.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Chadwick. I agree, I would love to see some sort of middle-of-the-road approach here where we can retain the seats but ensure the people who build those seats are more representative of the county as a whole, right? Like, if you look at the folks that are about like, is it ideal that, you know, they're theoretically representing forty-five or a little less than fifty percent of the population that are voting the other way a hundred percent of the time? Definitely not, right? I can see why unincorporated votes and, you know, my colleagues on the other side of the aisle might, would be frustrated about that. I would be too, you know. But I kind of, I look back at what eliminating those two at-large seats altogether would do, just looking at the numbers. And I'm just, I'm just not convinced. I mean, if we look at the last executive race, you know, a Democrat was elected by fifty-seven percent of the vote, which means forty-three percent of Republicans voted for the candidate that was selected. If you look at the current presidential race, sixty percent of Democrats versus thirty-five percent of Republicans. Governor is fifty-nine percent to forty percent roughly, with a couple other oddball folks thrown in there. And we look at the current percentage of the vote for our candidates with the, or our council with the seven people. If you just break the numbers, that's forty-two percent of the council vote. Obviously, that doesn't really break out that way, but just par numbers. You know, there's a forty-two percent representation of Republicans in that. So in some ways, like, that is relatively representative, but obviously, that's not happening in practice. And if we were to complete, if we were just to remove the two at-large seats, if we had done that ten years ago, we'd be in a situation right now where Republicans would have sixty percent of the representation on the council, assuming that we had a five council with three Republicans and two Democrats, in a world where sixty percent Democrats voted for a Democratic governor. And of course, this is all quantitative, sorry, this is all, you know, quantitative data, and this doesn't actually represent the real on-the-ground stories of people who are frustrated. But I'm just trying to like marry these two. And to me, that shows a clear need for a middle ground proposal where we're not totally eliminating the seats, but we're also not maintaining the status quo because clearly, that's not working for everybody in the county. And we have people who aren't feeling representative. And the whole reason I ran for this is to ensure that people are feeling represented. But I don't want to take a sledgehammer to this and create the opposite problem. You see what I mean? So I'm happy to try to explore a middle ground where both sides are represented here. You know, I've rung that horn from the very beginning, and I've worked with you all to do that on other issues that are important to me, and I know my colleagues have as well. And I would look forward to trying to do that here as well. Can we find a way to make this work for everybody? Maybe it's a waste of time. Some folks might feel, I don't think it's a waste of time, but some might feel about it. So that's just kind of where I'm at on this. I'd love to talk through some ideas and see if we can find something that passes a legal challenge and that ten of us can feel comfortable sending to the voters. So that's my two cents on it.
Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Redding.
Commissioner Holton, no. So you don't want to get rid of, so you don't want to go to five? It's, I mean, if we went to seven, that were each in their own district, was that?
If we, are you opposing breaking this into seven districts? What?
Well, instead of, yeah, I mean, just instead of the five, it would just be seven members selected for their, in their own district. So we'd have to redistrict, but.
I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah, I want to object to the way people are using the word representative because honestly, in districts three, four, and five, Republicans are represented. They're represented by Republicans, okay? There's a difference between being represented and being in control. And let me illustrate that for you by flipping that to the national level. Democrats are represented in the House of Representatives. Do we win any votes at this point? Never, never, because we don't control, okay? You can't, you can't make a demand that the minority get to control. That's against every, the whole principle of democracy all the way through all of human history. It's just that simple. You can't control with a minority, or you're violating democracy. Just that simple.
Commissioner.
Um, I was just, thank you for that. And I was also thinking about representation and how we're, we're talking about how conservatives aren't as represented on our council. And one, so I'm very much in favor, like, I'm here to represent the voice of District Three, not a particular political ideology. And that's why, you know, sometimes I seem like a swing vote if you're only looking at a DMR. But I'm thinking about like everybody who lives there, right? I would love for the folks who are on our council to do that. And I think that a lot of them actually do come from that same perspective as much as they possibly can. And when I think about our conservatives on council, I can think of two of them who do that very consistently. One of them's here tonight, and had awesome meetings, council members strummed, or that really made me think. And if there's a person who's like not engaging, not representing their people at all, not coming to the table to work on things, I think that also can speak to the person who was put forward and elected. And so I'm just gonna chime in on that as well. Do you think it's, I mean, I hear what everyone's saying. I'm not just counting, so if you folks know me, I think of all the ideas. So I'm not like staunchly one direction or another. Sometimes it's strong ideas, looks like hell. But I'm just thinking of like, this is, this is one argument. Where are the other things that you would not consider? And those are some thoughts that I have, right? It's not a decision of whom we are. Anyway, that's my, my thoughts.
I'm gonna pass the gavel just to reflect on what a public comment you said earlier, which is that what we have right now is not fair. And I would agree with that. And eliminating the at-large, if we are looking at a single winner system, is also not fair because then you would have the tug war going in the other direction. I think that the concept of ranked choice voting got politicized really early on in this commission, and I think that's really unfortunate because if we're looking purely at one person, one vote, I think proportional representation is the most fair way to do it. And I think we would have to look at, okay, we don't want to have bigger councils because we've talked about costs and we've talked about all of that. But in what kind of configuration could we have more than one representative per district? So that if there truly are forty percent Democrat voters in District Three, that they could be represented. And then the sixty percent could also be represented because, you know, twenty-five, thirty, forty percent is not insignificant, especially if you live in a neighborhood or in a part of unincorporated where you don't feel like your neighbors have your same values and interests. You want to have a representative in an elected body who is looking out for you. I like to believe that they're doing it, whether they're Democrat or Republican. I think this commission has demonstrated the will of the people in a way that I do believe that our values are trying to figure out what is it that the county needs, not what is it that our political careers need. I hope that's true. But in this situation where it feels like we've kind of already thrown out the opportunity to have proportional representation, I just wanted to take a minute to contemplate what it would look like. They do it all over the world, right? And have successfully for more than a hundred years in some places. So why couldn't we have, for example, in District Three, proportional representation? So that people had someone that they could go to with their issues, even if the majority in that district or neighborhood didn't agree with them? But it just seems like that would take a lot of this either-or or like the contention out of it and just really be more truly representative. So I hope we can still consider those. I know we're coming down to the end of our time before language goes to the ballot, but I think it's a disservice to people to just say like, oh, that's a Democrat issue or that's a Republican issue. But this is an issue, like council member Orros pointed out last time, we have more comments about this than anything else. And I think it's because people of every political persuasion are feeling like they're unrepresented. And that's really unfortunate. I think we have opportunity to do something better than that. That doesn't have to be winner-take-all or the minority doesn't get any control because that minority is going to be very unhappy regardless of what their politics are. And I think that's not, it's not fair, and it's also not safe in the long run. Go ahead, Commissioner Ellenboss.
Yes. If you recall, when I first sat down with the various members, one thing that I talked about is that, is that one, we didn't have a copy of the budget. We didn't know, we still know. I mean, maybe somebody here does, but I keep saying, I don't, I haven't seen that budget. And I have problems, I know the council has problems with others and I think they can have an attorney outside of the prosecutor's office. My goal initially was, okay, the last Charter Review Commission came up with proposals. The council did something that, in my interpretation, was illegal. And it was probably this body's responsibility to take back control as the people's representatives and attempt to undo what the perceived illegal activity of of the then-existing council created by Charter Amendments Nine and Ten. In other words, to get an attorney to do the, you know, the, the, so it wasn't just Joe's words that said that or anybody else's opinion. So that was an important thing for us to undertake. I know I had that conversation with Andrew sitting there shivering in the outside cold. But it, I think that still sits before us. It gets to the particular issue and we haven't, we, if, the only thing that's been demonstrated to me for sure is that we've got things in the prosecutor's office that we don't necessarily, as a group, appreciate and as to how they handle things. We've got things in the executive's office and the failure of Complisat that we don't necessarily appreciate. We see the need, we perceive need of performance auditing, whether it's an amendment or not, but wouldn't it be beneficial if, if it could be applied to the things we're looking at? And I don't know whether we're too late in the process to undertake that. But I've heard several proposals or the portions of proposals. And I think Holton probably hit it the best. He hit it right on the head when he said, if this had happened in two thousand and fifteen and we had eliminated the at-large positions, it would be three council districts would be leaning to the right and two would be leaning to the left. And that there would be a sense of unfairness because of the makeup of the, of the overall county. Well, there's truth to that. And then, but then we get to the representative criteria. The United States of America, whether we like it or not, is a republic wherein the representatives that are elected are those who control what the legislative part of our body does. And I'm here to tell you that if you were to talk to the people that proposed Charter Amendment Nine that created the five districts and the at-large, additional at-large position, it was for a specific purpose because they knew that that would benefit them. So if this body is not willing to look at the proposal I made, then I think we need to try and come up with another means to address that. And thus far, while I'm not wild about creating seven districts, having seven separate districts where the individual, there are seven council members, each elected by their constituents, seems far more representative, potentially solving the problem than where we sit today. So if we, if we could just narrow down to that conversation temporarily, I'm pretty sure you want to call a break pretty soon. But is, is that an acceptable concept? Or does that just lie in the face of, of us not liking it?
So I'm listening to what you're saying and, like, while you were speaking, some, like, thoughts were going off in my mind. And, like, I hear what you're saying about the seven districts. And I'm wondering if we had, you know, two representatives from each of several districts, would that not be also representative? Because it's kind of similar to what we're talking about. It's just that it's ranked choice voting. So like, when I voted, I wouldn't have to pick the lesser of two evils. I get a vote for the person I like the best in rank it. It just sounds like very similar to me.
If I'm understanding what you're saying, would that mean that we would have fourteen council members?
No, I think it was, it was, I think it is, it would end up being nine because it would be, what was that, three and three? Yeah, three and three, that's right. So three from each region. So it would get back to the three that you had originally. It would allow people to vote how they feel. And because you're getting, you know, three people, you would be, you know, it would, the deck wouldn't be stacked for one or the other. You need to get proportionally to who's in that area, the folks elected. So for me, I see ranked choice voting as a nonpartisan issue. I don't want to silence any voices, I really don't. But it just seems like, well, because I don't feel represented in my district, like, at all on council, right? Like, zero. But if we have three people in my region, maybe there'd be, like, at least one of them representing my area who also.
Well, Madam Chair, there is, there is one other alternative and that's why I talked about the illegality, the presumed illegality of. I don't know statute limitations or the timeframe may have passed to do this. But one way to at least improve on where we are now is to have that matter go before the court and the court strike and require a redistricting back to three. And then we go back to two, two representatives from each district and we have one at-large. That, in my mind, is a, is a potential improvement. And I, it doesn't sound like it's something that the, that the body would, I mean, I'm not hearing arguments against what that would produce.
Commissioner Collins, I see you right here, hello, sorry, I forgot about the screen. Go ahead.
Uh, no worries at all. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not there with you in person and thanks for accommodating me. I, I won't repeat anything that's been said, but I wanted to, to react to some of the ideas we've heard. I appreciate the creativity around trying to find a, a path that addresses, I think, the valid concerns around fairness of these at-large seats. Commissioner Chadwick brought up the, the kind of north and south at-large seats. And I was really excited about that idea when he, when he brought it up. My, my understanding from talking to our, our council i- is that, yeah, you just, you can't have kind of overlapping districts on, on two different systems. A, you, you can have at-large and district, but you can't have kind of two different sets of geographic districts. But I, I thought that was a, that was a great idea. Commissioner Kelly, you brought up the, the seven individual districts. It was another one I thought, oh, okay, I hadn't, I hadn't considered that. But the, the more I, I thought about it, I, in addition to money and politics, I think being one of our, the, the drivers of dysfunction in our, in our governments, gerrymandering is, is, I think, a really big problem too. And I think the five districts we have now are, are fairly drawn. There's no guarantee that it would be in the future. But when you get, the more granular you get, the more distinct seats you have, the more significant it is if you've got, you know, this side of the street or, or not included in there, or this, this part of a precinct. So I think it just, I, I was, I was excited about that idea when you, when you first mentioned it for a couple days. I thought, okay, this is the right compromise here. But then I, I think it's just way too vulnerable to, to gerrymandering and could be unfair on both sides. I think if there's a pathway to address this, it, it has to address more than just the at-large seats in isolation. I, you know, we're, we're really restricted under state law in how we can reformat our, our council. Like, one of my takeaways at this point is, like, okay, maybe this, the, we don't have the tools that we need under, under state law right now. But we have, we have some. I, I think there are potential paths that include proportional representation. Commissioner Wright was just talking about the, you know, the three districts, each representing three, three districts, each electing three representatives. We haven't contemplated, like, five or seven members all elected countywide, in which if it's a proportional system, even a vote share of less than twenty percent would, would get you a seat. We also, we haven't talked about any ideas of a, an even number. You could do the three districts with, with two each. There's nothing that says it has to be an odd number. I am intrigued, though, by going back to three districts with two representatives and, and an at-large. But I just, I wanted to kind of throw those, those other things out there that we haven't talked about yet. I really appreciate the, the creative ideas people are throwing out. And I will now go back to my, my screaming children.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, you have something else?
Yeah, in fairness to Commissioner Allenbus, I do want to at least respond to your procedural concerns, since nobody's addressed that and you've made a big deal of that. And I want to point out that the charter, as you said, provides three methods. And it does not say anywhere in the charter you can't combine them. It doesn't say no mix and match. So it's completely legal to do so, facially so. There's nothing wrong with doing that. I know it was irritating. And I realize that the fact that the attempt to get signatures and failing and then leading to asking county council members to do it for them was frustrating to you, but it's still legal. The county, it, it, that's one of the things that's very specifically said as a power of the county council in the charter. And there's nothing there that says you can't use that power at the, you know, if, if, if a group of people have failed to raise enough signatures for that. There's nothing in there that says you can't use that power if the, if it's a charter review, county charter review here and combine, add, add your own things to the ballot. It's all completely legal. I, I realize the frustrations with it. I realize that you don't like the politics behind it and that's all valid. But that's very different from legality. And so it's perfectly legal. And so we really, I think, should confine ourselves to the merits of the current system and the alternative systems.
Well, in, in response to that, my concern at the legality that we're talking about, the, the first aspect of using one rather than a two or three at the same time is expressed, it's at least implied in the charter that it's not, it's not wise to do. But the portion that's illegal is that the county council has a responsibility to adopting the Watkins County Code. And then they, just like us with the charter, with, with our consideration, we use this. And if we don't follow these rules, what we do is null and void. What the council failed to comply with is they didn't have time to do it through the necessary timing and notice process. And so they declared an emergency when that emergency clause was only available to them for financial matters and things of that sort. It wasn't to try and change the, the results of the charter review submission commission, submission to them to submit to the voter. And so the violation of that process, not only the timing, but then the means that they took with a consent. And consent, that just really means that in order to get something, part of the charter, just in rough, part of the county code says that if you, if you're going to have a meeting, if, if council member Stromler wanted to have an item on there and he goes to the, he goes to, back at that time, it was Deana Brown-Davis, and said, I'd like to have this on the agenda for her, she has to call around and get somebody else, some other council member, I presume that still exists, in order to get it on the agenda. Well, their rules say that no action will take place unless there are, there are minutes that demonstrate that they followed the procedure. So if they take a consent situation and put it on the, on the, the proposed ordinance, which is what they were doing, or putting that, they, one, declared an emergency, which is inappropriate, violated their own rules. And they then followed the consent calendar, had no minutes to present as to, as to who even was a secondary person that approved it. It was just the clerk of the council and went ahead and put it on the agenda. And so that made the process, that, that's the portion, Andrew, that is illegal. And that, that not only was frustrating, it was, it was insulting that the, that the council doesn't comply with their own rules. Yeah, but I, I won't, whatever you say, I've got no further comment on it.
Yeah, I, I just want to point out the time for challenges on legality has to be contemporaneous. You don't do that ten years later. And so there was an opportunity there for the minority on the council to have actually done a legal challenge on this. If in fact, there was a case for that, and I don't know anything about whether there was a case or not, I've not studied this. So I'm not trying to make an after-the-fact judicial verdict on something I don't know about. But I'm, all I'm saying is the time to raise these judicial questions is right at that time. And I don't see that any of the minority actually did that at that point.
I would love to take a break. I do want to say, Commissioner Allenbus has pointed out during our last couple Committee of the Whole meetings, if at the end we don't bring forward a recommendation for the next meeting, what we've had here is a conversation. So I do want to respect everybody's time and, and honor that that is an option at the end of this meeting for us to put forward a recommendation regarding this.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
To that end, I would move that this committee as a whole recommend to the commission approval of a concept to remove the two at-large, to propose to the public a, an amendment to remove the two at-large county council positions.
I'll say that. Go ahead, Commissioner Holton.
So did you say to propose to the public? As in, like, sorry, can you restate what you said at twelve, make sure I understand?
Yes, it would be my recommendation that the, that this body approve the concept, or this body recommend to the commission an amendment which goes, would be submitted to the public to render the decision on whether or not to remove the two county, the two at-large positions.
So essentially sending this to a second vote that we would then vote on again to the public?
Right, we, oh, yeah.
Just want to make sure, I thought I heard, just want to get straight to the voters, so. Go, make sure I understand you right here.
But to be clear, this is to recommend a yes vote at the second vote. That is what it's asking for.
To recommend to the commission an approval on Amendment Nine to send to the voters.
That, that appropriate, yeah.
And then when we get it, it's recommending a yes vote on it, right? So if he's, he's saying, if we vote yes, we're recommending, like, yes, we want to go to the commission and we're suggesting it's not, it's not.
I can just hash it out later.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah. In that respect, Andrew's wording is not correct. Is this, this body is recommending to the commission that, that we submit to the public that, the issue of removing them. But when the commission gets it, the commission will have a debate on what the recommendation of this body is. The, the beauty supposedly of what we're doing is it gives us a little more flexibility and hopefully, hopefully come up with a compromise, yeah. There's nothing binding by a recommendation from the, from the committee as a whole.
Commissioner Ryan.
Well, there's nothing binding. It's still recommending a yes vote from ourselves to ourselves. And it will look very silly if we recommend a yes vote and then vote no later.
Right, okay.
Just so you're clear.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Commissioner Lechner, hi.
I'm just officially checking in, that's all.
It's good to see you. We heard your letter earlier, thank you for that. Okay. Proceeding, no, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for not compromising on it, first of all, I appreciate that. And I want this to go to a roll call, please. So everybody knows who wants to let the people have more say on it than just tonight, so. Thank you.
So, quick question. So this gets moved forward, we still can change this amendment? So we can have a different idea of getting, you know, eliminating the two and go to maybe something different than what is stated here, correct?
Also, if we vote not to recommend it, we still vote again on whether it gets submitted to the voters. So this is the last time we write an amendment, no matter what happens to it. To answer your question, yes, I think until we vote the final, um, 10 out of 15 or not, I think, um, we could still recommend changes to.
But as clarification to what Lindsey just said, or Commissioner Ellenbus just said, I will find it difficult to take any more of this body's time if we fail to make a positive recommendation out of this. It, it's obviously the, the property of the body, but it is futile. And I want others on the other side to feel the same way about the things that they face to continue to beat a poor dog when that dog is crawling away licking its wounds.
Okay.
Commissioner. Um, I, I just keep looking for a middle way, that's what I always do, and hoping and hoping like, well, we have ranked choice voting on one side, we got to get rid of the at-large seats on the other, get rid of the at-large seats, and we go to three districts like it was before with three people. When I think about my district, District Three, we have, uh, Commissioner Reinstre, myself, and Commissioner Chadwick, right? Which does represent a range of views in our area. And if it was ranked choice, I think that would be even more distinct potentially, but pulled out a vote for, for three people. I guess I just keep thinking like, could we do a homo deal that would feel like, not quite like, success means like, everybody doesn't get exactly what they want, right? Everyone's thinking like, oh, a part of what I wanted, but not exactly. So I just keep thinking like, is there a way we could build those that would feel good? So that's my final thought, if we vote, so I.
Is that your hand question, Mr.?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Matt Jerry. So, uh, I would, I, I mean, I would actually look forward to working on, um, this amendment proposal in the lens of like how, um, how we craft a system that is broadly proportional representative fair. Um, as I understand the motion, I, I don't feel comfortable giving it a due pass of like, voting as a, voting for it to be a due pass recommendation in its current form. And therefore would, will be voting a no on this, in this particular case. But I do see value in bringing it back and working, um, to, at a later date. And we've discussed a lot of ideas here, and I, um, think that it does deserve the, the due diligence of the conversation.
Yeah, I'll just second the thing that, um, Commissioner Jordan said, you know, I don't feel comfortable with the, the proposal as it currently states going forward. I, um, would love the opportunity to work with my colleagues to find a way that makes 10 of us feel happy. You know, I feel like, I guess I understand this sentiment of, oh, let's just bury things that aren't going to work. You know, why are we sort of going back and forth and wasting time trying to find a compromise? Um, but I also feel like that's the purpose of this body. If our constituents didn't want us to compromise with five solutions, they would have elected 10 folks from the same party to, to do that work. And so I would love the opportunity, if it's the political will, to work on this and try to find a system that works better. But if we're looking to vote on principle and make a stand on this, you know, it is what it is. Uh, I really respect you bringing this proposal and having this conversation. So I think it's really important, and I'd love to continue it. But if this is the last we're talking about it, outside of, you know, the next time that we vote, go go vote, and if that doesn't change, will we finally vote to bring this to people? It is what it is. Appreciate the work you're doing.
So can you please call the roll? Joe Ellenbus?
Yeah.
Lindsey Graham Ellenbus?
Yes.
Fulton Colton?
No.
Brad Kelly?
Yes.
Maya Morales? John Muchler?
Yes.
Hannah Ordos?
Yes.
Joel Pitts Jordan?
No.
Andrew Redding?
No.
Jessica Reinstra?
No.
Rod Stone?
Yes.
Jennifer Wright?
No.
Doug Chadwick?
Yes.
Amy Collins?
No.
Liz Darrow?
No.
That motion fails seven to seven with one excuse. Uh, it, it is the will of the body. I'd love to take a break, um, right now, and we convene at eight.
Calling this meeting back to order. Back to order.
Are we having fun yet?
Yes. I mean, the cookie and coffee. Was it Rosemary McTellie? No, thank you for bringing it to the world. We are called to order as of 8:11. We're going to turn now to propose amendment 10, all elected official salaries. Commissioner Redding, would you like to speak to your minute?
Sure. And I'll begin by addressing Steve Oliver's remarks. Steve Oliver pointed out, much as Eric Ritchie did at a prior meeting, saying, wait a second, you've come up with all these different versions of this thing. It's like all over the place, you know. Now, I do want to point out that if you come up with something and you stick by it rigidly and you don't listen to everybody else, people say, you don't listen to people. If you make all the changes, they say, well, you change everything all the time. So you can't win these things, I've learned. That's the reality of politics.
We like perpetuity.
But anyways, yeah, I have chosen to listen to people and to make adjustments as I listen to more and more people as I go along the way. And one of those things, so one of the most recent changes was a result of something that Jennifer actually brought up. Jennifer was concerned about never having a situation where there was a reduction cap, even if, even when it's a new election. Okay, so I put that in, I listened to that, I added that to it. Now, you talked about bending the knee to the prosecutor, and I want to show you why this is absolutely not the case. Hold on, I'm speaking now. I'm speaking now, I get my chance. You'll maybe have a chance later. But in fact, what I've done in there, if you look very carefully at how I worded that, I wanted to make sure that we're not including the prosecutor on the same terms as the other ones, because the prosecutors in some of these counties get paid more than even the state wants them paid. Okay, if you look at the figures. And so I wanted to make sure we never went above the amount the state recommends on prosecution. And not only that, I also wanted to make sure that currently the state pays half the amount. And that's a big deal as far as I'm concerned. I would love that the state offer to pay half the amount on our other positions, right? But if the state ever changes its mind on that, I put in language there to make sure that we would not be automatically making up the second half if the state isn't paying the first half. Okay, that's what that's about. And so then the maximum would become what the state is recommending, okay? That would be a maximum instead of what we're actually paying. But as long as the state's willing to pay half, this says, okay, we'll pay the other half, but no more than that. Okay, we're not going to do like that county that went well above what the state is recommending. So it's just about, you know, setting up certain guardrails. I think they're very reasonable at this point. You mentioned about published salaries. Well, the reason for that was in the last meeting, when we discussed this, it was like, well, how can you predict what they're going to be doing? Well, we can't predict. We absolutely can't predict. So the best we can do is look at what they've already published, because that's the only thing we know for sure. And why do I think this is reasonable? Because we're comparing, when we get right down to it, two counties that have four times our population, namely Pierce and Snow. Okay? And so if they have four times our population, we don't have to hit them right on the mark every time. We can afford to be a little bit below them, a little bit, right? So combine that, and then I also took to heart the comments that were made about, you know, comparing the county executive to the governor and the prosecutor to the attorney general. When it turns out that the comparisons are even worse when you look at all the other positions, like treasurer, for instance, you know? You get paid well better than the state treasurer. And I didn't want to, you know, I have a great deal of admiration for you, for the sheriff, for the assessor, for the auditor. And so, no, I didn't really want to cut your pay at all. That was never the purpose in all of this. And so, you know, that's one of the reasons I chose to just make this, forget about the state. Just forget about the state. We're never going to get anywhere with that. They should be paying more, there's no question about it. And so I didn't want to do an apples to oranges on that, but it's not apples to oranges when we're comparing to other counties, and particularly ones that are many times our size. And for that, I think it's still fair to just have that thing with the additional proviso that they'll never get cut. And that the most that would happen would be a pause until we get into those guidelines. It's not even guidelines, these are just outer boundaries, so to speak. So let me see that I get everything here. Yeah, so that is basically an explanation of the latest version of this. I think it's as low as it can go and still pass muster. Anything more than this, then we really aren't actually offering anything to the voters. And so this is pretty much my final proposal. I can't think unless somebody else can think, but I'm not going to go to, I'm not going to be okay with, oh, hey, salary commission, we think this would be, maybe you should think about the following, maybe please. We're just, all we do anyways, we're just 15 people here who do not have power of legislation. Yes. So when we just say something, we're not stopping the county council talking here. You know, it's not at that level. And it's not going to be taken that way by a salary commission. They're going to keep on doing what they're going to do. And so I do think, I feel very strongly, and I think on some of this, I'm maybe more Republican than some Republicans in here, I feel there should be some outer boundaries on what we pay our elected officials compared to counties that are four times our size.
Which Republican are you more conservative to?
I'm not going to name names, I don't want to get people mad.
He's talking about me. She's talking about me.
No, there's several.
I worked on this several times with Commissioner Redding, and he was very flexible in all this along the way. For me, what changed was many conversations with folks who are actually on the salary commission itself. And one of the things I found when talking to those people is, A, no one shows up, no one has given input, no one has talked to them, nobody asks them what happens with their commission. And when I did ask those questions, I was given some very clear insight into what might give them better tools. But they are citizens just like I am, and they do care, and they would love to hear from us, and it's available to us to reach out to them. And I would prefer to empower them to do the work that they can do.
With guidelines?
Yes, with saying they ask for more time. They don't think a two-year commitment is enough to understand what the job is and to have a tool in place. There's a couple things like that.
Just an overall question for Andrew Enlund, who obviously worked on this, and they may know. Since the 2005 Charter Review Commission submitted to the voters an opportunity to remove the 15% cap of the executive salary, and that failed, I just presume that that means that cap is still there and that that might have been the driver, in the back of my mind, that might have been the driver for allowing the executives' pay to get exorbitantly large so that the 15% cap still gave more money to the council members. But evidently, looking at the numbers that we have here, 79,000 is more than 15% of 244,000. So what is the existing situation as it relates to what guidelines charter-wise exist? Because doesn't the charter still say?
It's not in the charter.
Well, how could that be when the public voted down the proposal to remove it?
I don't know what you're talking about, but it's not in the charter.
Are you talking about section six, the salaries of elected officials?
I'm talking about, in 2005, the question to propose amendment number two was show the charter be amended to remove the salary limitation for council members currently limited to no more than 50%, 15% of the county executive. That failed. So that being the case, I'm wondering how that has been exceeded, because obviously it has been exceeded. So the council itself must have passed an ordinance in the intervening time and put it to the voters again in some other format in order for that salary to be there. I don't know whether that question is germane, but it's just something that this chart, I mean, those two documents caused me to wonder, what is going on?
Yeah, it's not in the charter now, is all I can tell you. I've read the charter forwards and backwards, and it's not in the charter.
Well, let's see when it gets removed. Go ahead with, I'm sorry, I'll do my own research here.
Go ahead, Commissioner. I really appreciate the compromise that you added to where the salaries jumping down. So I think that's awesome and very necessary for this. There's some things I'm still thinking about with it, like I'm wondering if you spoke to yourself, how many salary commission members you spoke to when you were talking about this, and then also Commissioner Ellenbach had shared some of the concerns. I guess I'm just wondering if there's other things we could like drop into it that might make it better, like a whole piece, and have some guardrails to it while still being moderate in what we're doing.
Do you mean like adding in, making it a four-year term rather than a two-year term? Is that what you mean, or what are you talking about?
I think Commissioner Ellenbach will probably speak more specifically to what those are. I just know that she's spoken to a bunch of them, and I was wondering who had spoken to them and how many of them.
I've spoken to only one, and that, it was not my purpose in doing all of this. It was to set guardrails, not to speak to members of a dimension to find out why every single position we are paying more than the counties with four times our population. Every single position. To me, that's just, it's just that clear. When it's, you know, it's cut and dry, but the system's not working, okay? So I'm willing to add in of the things that would do, for instance, make their terms longer so they have more time to learn in response to Lindsey's suggestion. I'm not willing to get rid of the guardrails. I'm firm on that. There got to be some guardrails, and they have to be firm. It can't be, oh, please do this, think about this, maybe think about this. No, it's got to be firm.
Commissioner Kelly?
Who points to the issue? I mean, how does somebody get on the salary commission? There are 10 members, four, six of whom are sort of chosen at random. Not exactly. It depends on, you have to still be somebody who essentially is volunteering, and then you get chosen at random for that. And the four others are named...
Okay, who's choosing?
Ultimately by the county council.
You mean some lottery?
No, well, it's a lottery. Yeah, go ahead.
Jury duty or something.
Pardon?
I said kind of a lottery, like jury duty or something. You get notified that you've been selected for that opportunity.
And four others are nominated by the county executive and approved by the county.
Based on four specific categories.
So how many, okay, so how many get appointed by the county council?
No. Essentially, oh, that's not subject to approval by the county council?
Oh, I'm not sure on that, that they're not originally.
Well, the short answer is they're all appointed by recipients of the salary that they approved. That corrected, isn't that a correct statement?
I just want to know how somebody gets on it, that's...
Right. Four are appointed based on their willingness to serve in four different categories, and I think they are in this.
Legal labor.
Yeah, organized labor. H R experience.
Background, yeah, that's sort of the person you want.
Because that was alarming to me at first until I dug into it further, and then that piece of it wasn't as alarming as some of the numbers we talked about. So it's just a matter of getting to where that comes from and what the best way to address that with our charter is.
So I have no objections to the committee per se, and this preserves the committee and preserves it as it is. All I'm trying to do here is get these now very commonsensical guardrails in place with no cuts in anybody's pay. Even people who are running for office for the first time would not get less than the incumbent, than the previous person. So this is really quite a reduced, but I think it's a good one, mind you. And I like the fact that nobody's pay gets cut.
Oh, sorry. Just for the benefit of those that were listening, there's questions about how these individuals are selected. Six are selected by lot, by the county auditor from amongst those registered voters eligible to vote at the time persons were selected for appointment to full terms on the commission. From what we've heard before, those positions are difficult to fill. The other four are selected and appointed by the county executive. All four appointees have experience in personal management, and one member was selected from each of the following areas of expertise, business, legal profession, organized labor, personnel management. Just for the benefit of the body and for the individuals' needs.
I still wonder about, like, if there's six selected by lot. Is it from those who apply? Or is it just by lot randomly from all the voters? And so I guess I'm wondering, just when I look at it, it seems like everybody's experts. So those are like things I would like to see, is like, on the task force that I help co-chair and am now a member of, you know, we have to do work to get people on there as well and try to highlight the diversity of your range of experience. I think it's important to have a financial expertise and all of that, but also like, I don't know, I think somebody like Rosemary, you know, she might be in the... But it's like that hard?
She's concerned about money. Right? I just said, I think that there's like a lot of people who are very interested actually in this topic, and so I'm wondering how it ends up like old people in finance, and I'm wondering, is there room for adjustment? And like, how do we do that? These are just like other things I'm still thinking about.
Just to answer your question, so based on some of these email addresses, so we have, one of the citizen-at-large is from Windermere, and another one is from DeWort and Bogie. And so it looks like there's, and then, yeah, so it looks like it's not just total of corporations coming in and setting salaries for everybody.
But to clarify, we did go through this before, and the lot is of people who apply. So folks who apply is...
She, she's, oh, but I think she's clarifying how it is random. I thought it was just randomly calling.
People apply. I talked to the deputy auditor and I talked to the mayor's office. It is from the voter rolls and they pull a certain number of fifty games and they send out letters and if someone responds yes, they're automatically on. They have a hard time going ahead, not surprised.
Isn't there an option for people to repeat too? So they don't have to get out, they get it to stay on, they get it to be on price. So then there's only probably four spots available for.
Only one person, I think, since last one came to the.
Madam Chair, I, I request that you remove, you return to the orders of day and that we're not dealing with with how that body has created.
Thank you. Commissioner Colton, did you have something to say that is related to what we were talking about before?
Are you?
Go ahead.
I just, I don't think this is doing anything. I think you've got guardrails up that aren't necessary. I think our commission can do stuff already. Their, the commission's not elected, but the people that are getting paid are and if they do a bad job, we'll get them out of there. I think the salaries right now are fair. I think that they're what you'd pay somebody in, uh, doing that job in a private company, they're probably getting paid less. So I, I, I think there's bigger, if you really want to save money, you'd be looking at staff of the county executive and his doubling of his staff versus the previous executive, if you wanted to, if you're concerned about money. There's lots of places to save money and the ten, fifteen thousand dollars that you're gonna save on this isn't the juice and the work to squeeze.
Commissioner Kelly and then Commissioner Ellenboss?
Okay, so Rod, um, talked to a former county council member just a couple of months ago. They were saying that you have to take this number that you see here and times it type to like one point five. And that's what it costs the county. With all the benefits, the healthcare, the pension, the 401K, so anyway.
Commissioner Ellenboss?
Yeah, I Do I have permission to speak directly to Commissioner? Okay. Commissioners, don't.
Yes, Commissioner.
I feel I've, I've always earned a pretty good living. I was a banker and I was a builder and I've a farmer, been a farmer for a lot of years. And I've got a lot of my offspring are a lot smarter than I am. They all, my offspring and my relatives all went to work out at the refinery. And so they like you are in that limited group of people that really are paid close to what you're worth, if, if not more than in some people's cases, okay? And I really do think that the benefit that we would provide in proposing something like this to go before the voters so that they can choose is that you're in the top twenty percent of the people, your income is in that cat, particular category, those of us in the county. And I'm not, I'm not envious of it because you have to deal with a lot of different issues, but I do want to say that the bulk of the voters would look at these numbers. They don't know these numbers are here. I mean, just recently I took a look at a school district super dense salary and they gave me eight months, eight out of the twelve months, it's two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars, where it's only eight months into his annual contract. Nobody in the district knows that, but these particular numbers, I don't care what people think about whether or not it's what they're worth or not. It's what they're getting paid compared to the rest of us in the county that are paying the money into the coppers that pay them. And all we're asking to do with something like this is to provide some guardrails or benchmarks for the salary commission, which heretofore in my mind has paid has given pay raises higher than they should be. And why do I say that? No longer my opinion, the facts are here. Counties four times our size are paying substantially less than we're paying. And so the public should have a right to suggest, uh, and this is all I'm asking for, is the public should have a right to do that. I'm not, it's hard for me to argue with you, Mr. Stump, because you're a pretty pretty thorough guy when you make your statement. But I would ask you to at least consider the fact that this is an issue that doesn't set the salary. It sets, it suggests to set the guidelines for those that do set the salary to have some limitations. That's, that's what our, I think that's what Mr. Reading, Commissioner Reading is, is proposing. And am I upset with Andrew? Well, after the much, the amount this has changed from the last time I saw it, when I agreed with him fully was we were starting out with salaries that were big drops right from the get-go. And we're not there anymore. So that disappoints me. But when you're in the minority, when you don't have the ability to make all the decisions, you have to be happy with directions that attempt to accomplish what I think the people want to have us accomplish and that is put some guidelines in the situation. That's, that's why I'm still, even though I'm holding my nose because we don't, we're not dropping any pay, I'm still gonna support this thing and I, I hope my probably inadequate words will cause you to maybe give it a favorable nod and, and that you will change your mind or at least consider what I've said. Thank you and thanks.
Chadwick, is that your hand?
Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I appreciate Commissioner Ellenboss's comments and, um, everybody here and also start out with, I, I am all for fiscal responsibility and do I think some of these, uh, electeds salaries got out of hand? Yeah, but again, the last time, the previous salary commission, we were in a much different time and place and they were trying to make some adjustments. And I would hate to lose the flexibility and that independent commission to me. They do a good job of looking at, uh, the data. And I think this time around, they did make some course adjustments, which were appropriate. But, um, again, I, I've seen them work. I've talked to elected officials and Commissioner Lindsey Ellenboss is correct. Um, the public probably should go to those salary commission meetings, let their voice be heard if they have concerns about um, what we're paying our elected officials. There's a, there's a time and place for that and I, I think if anything else, this sheds light on that process and I think that's a good thing. Um, I think that, you know, we, we talk a lot about accountability and transparency and to Commissioner Kelly's point, you know, take those salaries and times them by one point five and that's the true cost because you have to factor in the benefits. Well, to Commissioner Stump's point, it, if we look at cutting positions that are unnecessary, you look at their salary and times it by one point five and that's the true cost savings because you have to look at, um, the benefits. So um, again, I, I understand why this is being brought forward. And I would, I believe in the salary commission and maybe, um, we need to look at, I know there's been some concerns about how some of those people are appointed. And that, uh, people feel that, so maybe, maybe there's a better process for putting people on that salary commission, uh, to review. But they do, they look at comparables, they, they do those things. And they did make a course adjustment that I believe that was appropriate this last time and I hope that going forward, they continue to do that, but I don't want to lose that ability, you know, going back to the, when we first started talking about this, maybe, maybe for a charter, this is a, a little bit overreached. Maybe the decision should have been, do we have a salary commission? Or we, do we give it back to the county council? Um, but now we're, now we're trying to kind of direct other, other commissions of independently appointed folks and I would, I would allow them to continue to do their work. I understand the dissatisfaction of, of some of the members of this commission, but that, uh, that's my input.
Yeah, I just want to respond that there is nothing that they did this year that in any way addresses these issues. They gave full callous to everybody, which guarantees that all of the inequities that we're talking about here are going to continue unabated. And they will do that at the very least every year and you want to the flexibility you talked about there, because I actually with this proposal preserve full flexibility for them except for going above these outrageous limits, right? That's the only thing. I would suggest that what you're suggesting is maintaining their flexibility, but even further above these limits.
I see a comment from Mr. Westerfield. Go ahead.
It would break my heart to have to actually support and agree with an amendment from, uh, Commissioner Reading. It's not personal, it's principle. But from where he started with this a couple of months ago to tonight, I see a significant amount of compromise, a significant amount of change. And it's looking better to me. Oh, this hurts.
I can hear you.
I'm gonna have to go have a drink after. But you know, why would we be paying more than anyone else in the state for these positions? If it's supposed to attract better people, we know that's not working. So, um, how do you really feel? Commissioner Chadwick has given the best argument against it. But again, the retort was if they're not doing it well, should we keep letting them not do it well? So I think I'm gonna have to go and apply for that position or something. Anyway, that's the end of my comment. I, I respect the fact that Commissioner Reading has adjusted and compromised and, and mitigated his original proposal. As I said, it's gonna kill me to agree with him, but I think I might have to.
Um, so you're drawing me away, Westy, and I do appreciate and see like the, I think everything you said is about the compromise and all of that is a hundred percent true. Um, when I look at the numbers, they do look high. I'd like to see numbers for other, um, localities as well. And I like the fact that it's not cutting anyone's pay because I couldn't get on board with that. At the same point in time, I think like when I look at the charter, we do, um, we maybe don't have enough guardrails in the charter for how they'll are selected because I think it should be on the front and the back end, both like the limit on the cap. But I don't like to see, um, the composition looking so elite and like not representative of the people in our county. So I think having people with financial expertise and all those things is good, um, but I'd love to see it the people on there actually represent. And I'm not sure if we're calling and ending up with the books that we have as a competition.
Mr. Probably lovely to begin. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Commissioner, I I do agree perhaps we, we could, we could have explored that option. So certainly this is probably a little too late at this point. I mean, we, we have, we have, I rehashed this a ton. But to, to the point, right, like we want to have citizens more involved in this process and have the greater citizenry represented by the decisions made by this commission. Um, you know, there's been some comments before that if the citizens aren't happy with the pay of their salary, you know, their elected official salaries, they can go to these meetings and make a comment and yet they should. But we also need to realize like, people are really busy. I mean, we are as a fifteen-person body are making changes that impact the found, the fundamental bedrock of our of our county and we have some, we have some super fans that show up a lot of times and we've had quite a bit of comment, but given the gravity of what we've worked on, right? Relatively little feedback from the public for the identity of what we're working on. And I think the same thing can be directed to, uh, or can kind of be tied with salary commission. What I'm getting at here is that barring citizens showing up or residents showing up and interludes to give feedback on decisions, which I'm not a fan of requiring citizens to come to us, we should do more to go to them. But I think that this kind of does is the guardrails that are being built into this and kudos for the compromise, by the way. Love compromise. That's my, that's my broken record for today. If the citizens of this county were to introduce or to approve these guardrails, that's at least giving the will of the people some credence in this decision or in this process in a way that right now they aren't getting. And we could look at changing how people are selected to that process or we could encourage find ways to encourage people to show up in these meetings, but this just seems like a very direct way to ensure that the most amount of people's will is being reflected in this process. So my long-winded way of kind of addressing that is.
Madam Chair, in light of the comments by Commissioners Wright and Colton Bell, they're certainly not precluded from coming forth with some amendments in the Charter Review Commission meeting. But at this particular juncture, I would like to move that this body recommend to our commission that approval of the language as put forth by Commissioner Reading.
A second.
Got a comment, Commissioner Reading?
Uh, I just wanted to make, yeah, I did have a comment, which is that I wanted to draw a big distinction between this body, fifteen people elected, three for, very fairly from each of the five districts. So we're elected and yet we're only recommending something to the voters and the voters make the final decision. Let me contrast that with the completely unelected commission on salaries that has absolute power and cannot be overturned by anybody. That is a joke of, on democracy, when you get something like that. It's giving an unelected body absolute power. That is another part of my objection.
Commissioner Chadwick?
Just a point of clarification. This is probably for Kellen. Since the county has to approve an ordinance for these wages, could it not be overturned by a referendum? That's how they do it in the state.
No, the charter says it's final.
Well, Andrew, anything is, anything is subject to a
A charter amendment.
It's just a question, cause I know, cause I looked at, you know, the governor got a, what, sixty percent increase because there's a state salary commission. And there is an opportunity for the citizens to overrule those wage increases by a referendum. So I'm just asking the question, is that something that could happen here before the council approves those wages in a county ordinance? Or a resolution?
I mean, I, I am still, still here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I bet the charter does say the commission shall fix the salaries for all the elected positions. I, I don't think that would be subject to referendum, um, to revise that, but I would want to think about it a little bit more before giving you a final answer, but that would be my initial thought is that because it's in the charter stated that clearly that would not be subject to referendum.
I would just ask him for clarification just because it, the, the council has to approve by ordinance or resolution. I can't remember which, but those wages has to be.
He said they don't.
It was actually, it was actually written that way so that the commission's decision was final and binding because if the county council approves it and, and the commission's work also includes the salaries of the county council, if they approve it, then those people on the council can't, you know, can't receive those, you know, those salaries until their next election. You can't, if you're, if you're on a, if you're on the county council, you can't approve your own, your own salary increase. That, that's why.
And now as
Written that way.
As I'm looking at this more, looking in the code, there is a code provision. As said, the salary change is fixed by the commission, shall, shall be subject to referendum in the same manner as a county ordinance.
Commissioner.
Am I coming through? Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I just want to comment, uh, I haven't agreed with Commissioner Reading a whole lot on this proposal, except the last. except the last thing he said about the lack of accountability and the rather authoritative, uh, body that the salary commission is. This might sound counterintuitive, but the best remedy is to send this back to the county council. I have been in, in public office four terms, and this comes up every two years. I have voted many times on this, on the matter of salaries of mayor and council members. And first of all, as I just mentioned a few moments ago, you can't vote your own salary. You have to go through an election. So you're making a decision on something that won't change for two to four years in the future. And that puts a downward pressure on the amount of compensation. But more than anything, when you're an elected official, and I have been one now, um, for, for different terms, you're keenly aware of the public, keenly aware what, what the public thinks. And so if you go back in Waukegan County, I haven't had time to do this, but I bet dinner on this, that the, the compensation for both the, the executive, all the officers and the county council members were much less, much less before they had the salary commission. It sounds counterintuitive, but if you want salaries to be more in line to with what the public wants, you let the elective body that's, that's accountable to the public make that decision. Going to the salary commission, um, was not a good idea. And I think that's why we're here today.
Mr. Aaron Stumpf.
I agree with Mr. Muchler. Um, I just have a question for Andrew. What, what's your motivation? Why is this money so important to save the taxpayers versus all the other money that you don't care about saving? Why is this, why is this so important?
Well, actually, Commissioner Stumpf, you've actually heard me repeatedly in this very forum, state all the things I would cut in this, in the county budget. I've said so repeatedly. Um, and so you're making a false assumption about me. I am actually a budget cutter. Uh, I see a lot of things that I don't think are, uh, good apportionment of, of funds. And I've done that in all of my previous elected positions. I've actually cut budgets and reassigned money to things that are far more important. It's important to have that capability. And so no, this is something I do across the board.
I just haven't seen it here, so I was just curious why this is such, you kind of, this is the hill you're dying on. This is a very important one. I'm just, I'm respectfully asking you why this is more important than saying adding an ombudsman or whatever and adding more. I'm just.
I didn't say it's more important than something else, but.
You'll have no trouble probably voting for another position to be added to our county to get paid. And that will probably cost more than all the savings combined. I just want to know why this is so important to you. What's, what's the driver here? What's the motivation?
Because I think these things need to be proportional, you know? Look at the average income in this county. It's not all that high when it's compared to the kinds of salaries we're talking about. Okay? And you compare that to other counties that have higher median incomes than we do. And, uh, they have lower paid, even though they have four times the population and much bigger loads for these people, they're paying substantially less than we are. Okay? So there's a lack of proportionality. There's a lot, it doesn't make any kind of sense in that way. And from the state, so yeah, I'm very concerned about how we're handling public finances. But that goes across the board. You've heard me previously here talk about an entire, uh, department of the county executive that I don't think should even exist. It's the one that was created under the EMS funds. Okay? And I'm supported in this by, by our, uh, by our first responders who feel that way very strongly. That it's a completely useless thing. I would love that these discussions, you know, separately, it's not what I was elected for. I'm not on the county council. But if I were there, we'd be having these discussions and we'd be moving to cut all kinds of things out of the budget and reassign the funds to more important purposes.
That's right. Um, I do hear what Andrew has to say about like, is not caring, not caring only about one particular amount of money. I do think it is important and also, um, symbolic, especially if we put into place things around budget and, um, uh, auditing and things like that. An OMSB person who can look at internal complaints, I think like taken as a whole, it's shining a light on fiscal responsibility and also, um, like healthy governance from within. So to, you know, I'll argue both sides. That's a counterpoint that I think is, is valid to say it's a more, only valid in one or the other. I think it is like, we could together the bodies say like, financial responsibility is important to us. And these are all the different ways that we're addressing that.
Commissioner Muchler, is your hand still up? Um, yeah?
Thank you. This is just a point of order. I, I'm uncomfortable when commissioners are questioning the motives of other commissioners. This would be against the rules of Roberts, um, that we, it's just assumed that everybody really wants its best for the county regardless of our position. So that was uncomfortable to watch a moment ago. And we all want, we all want what's best for the county.
We do have a motion on the table. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Stumpf.
I'm all the way traded.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that was a question of integrity or anything. I was just asking if this particular amount of money was still important. I think, I'm sorry, Joe was stating.
I didn't take it as questioning my integrity.
Okay, um, Commissioner help me.
Uh, well, yeah, I was gonna mention that, uh, I think we had an open motion on the table from Joe that I'd like to see, but, um.
Okay, we do have a motion to recommend to the commission approval of amendment ten to send to the voters.
We might want to wait.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
So while, so while we're, I was gonna, a major promotion, a major promotion.
I'm sorry, the motion was to, to recommend to the commission approval of amendment ten to send to the voters.
We are, I thought we were doing just approval to recommend.
Yeah, that's exactly what, yeah.
But I suppose while I, while, because you, because you brought up the ombudses, um, I guess I'll talk about my motivation for, by.
Did you have more to say about the salary commission?
Right, we're, we, we are going to the next, this, this is still gonna go to the met, next meeting for a final vote, correct?
Yes, it's just the motion is to recommend that at the next meeting, the commission approves that.
Same as last.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
I thought there was a little different wording, but I'm good.
Yeah, for sure. Um, I think the reason that I support Andrew's proposal to rein in salaries while also proposing the creation of an office that would cost more money is that ultimately this is going for the voters anyway. Like the ombuds proposal would need to be approved by voters with the thought that it's gonna increase salaries versus how we have the salary commission now where that isn't subject to any voter approval, right? These decisions are kind of being made and there is like a referendum process, but that's not gonna happen. This would at least introduce some citizen oversight. So to me, it's of a similar threat, but I'll bring that up because it got highlighted. Now, um.
Commissioner.
Um, I just wanted to say that money is extremely important and how we send, spend it is like a moral indication. And so for me, spending money on like an OMSB person, which can help prevent a toxic work environment and give people guidance when there's issues, like we keep seeing pop up in the news where, um, there's been difficult situations. To me, that seems like a really valuable way to spend money. Um, so just wanted to make a comment.
Okay, recognizing the lateness of the hour, I would love to hear a full call, um, Stumpf. Lindsey Graham, Ellen Boss, abstained. Colton Colton Bell?
Yes.
Brad Kelly?
Yes.
Maya Morales? Don Muchler?
No.
Hannah Ordos? Joel Fitzjordan?
Aye.
Andrew Reading?
Yes.
Jessica Reinstra?
Yes.
Rob Stone?
So we're just voting for it to go to another meeting?
We're voting to recommend.
It is with the recommendation of a yes vote.
Yes.
That was a yes?
Yes, please.
Jennifer Wright?
Yes.
Don Chadwick?
No.
Aman Collins?
Yes.
Liz Darrow?
Yes.
Joe Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Hannah Ordos? No. The motion passes with ten in favor, three opposed, one abstention, and one excused. Okay, we do have one more issue to discuss tonight, and that is amendment proposal eleven. The offer of the amendment not being present, oh, Mr. Ellenboss.
Well, if that's before, I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay, I'll finish my sentence then. Thought it was an emergency with the height of your hand. Um, the, the author, the other amendment is not present. Um, we, um, earlier did not vote to move this to a future meeting. And so now, um, the committee of the whole can discuss. Mr. Ellenboss.
I, I just have a sense of where this body is going with this issue. And, uh, I would move that we recommend to the commission, I page non-support on this particular item.
I'll second that.
As the maker of the motion, I've just said, was there a second? I didn't hear.
There was a second for Mr. Ellenboss.
Um, we've discussed this quite a bit, and I'm, I'm at a loss as to whether we have. Um, and because of the hour, it's already post our quitting time. I would just like to encourage the body to go ahead and render your vote without debating it. Obviously, the maker of the motion has got the opportunity at our next commission meeting to bring up her position again. But the recommendation of this body hopefully will be an indication of how much time she wants to spend on it.
Commissioner.
I want to be able to explain what it is that I'm going to be voting, um, in support of your motion. What would that be? That would be a yes vote, correct?
That would be a yes to vote.
Okay. And, yeah, that's. Yeah, that would be. And my reasoning on that is, look, I have, I am not, I am sympathetic to the underlying idea behind it. But I think this enormous thing with endless amount of text and this choice and that choice and so forth is way too complex. One of the key things with ballot measures is the acronym KISS, keep it simple, stupid, right? And the whole idea behind that is because you don't, and we said this many times, and, and Commissioner Ellenboss has pointed out how important it is when you put something on the ballot that it be something that's comprehensible to the voter. Um, and this to me is, it's incomprehensible to me. And I have graduate degrees from Princeton, and it's still totally incomprehensible to me. So, you know, I, I would have hoped that, you know, they would have taken some hints about this and would have made this simple and something straightforward and something where I could at least understand what it is. But it isn't there, and at this late date, I don't see how it's going to be rectified. So that's why I'll be voting in favor of this budget.
Commissioner Muchler.
This is a point of order. I do not believe in the Roberts, we can vote in the affirmative for a negative. And what I mean by that, I think we have to ask the staff to, uh, to see if we can make this vote. Otherwise, if we can't, one of us, what I'm happy to do is you make a vote, you make a motion in the affirmative, even though you might be voting against it. So I think we're out of order at the moment, and.
Commissioner Muchler, to clarify, what I have is to recommend to the commission a do not pass on amendment number eleven. So to me, that is an affirmative motion, even though the recommendation itself is not affirmative. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for, uh, if, uh, confirmation that from staff.
Oh.
Do you understand Roberts?
That, that would be my understanding too, that because it's a recommendation, the recommendation itself is the affirmative act. And so it would be in order to vote on it even if the recommendation is to not approve the amendment at the final vote.
That's all I needed to hear. Thank you.
Yes.
Didn't we vote on this to discuss it at a, an actual charter review meeting? And we're just basically discussing that we'd like to recommend a no vote on that, correct?
Uh, my response to that is that yes, we had, um, we had moved this amendment a couple of times at the request of the author. The, um, idea to put it on this committee of the whole came from Commissioner Ellenboss last week. Um, and the, the author of the amendment was not in favor, knowing that she wouldn't be present. And so, um, I think this discussion here with the author being absent is not a thing that I would support for any commission member. I, I feel like it's deeply unfair, be that as it may, um, the votes to move it just weren't there. And possibly that being because it's been moved a lot of times, um, I can't say. But we had voted to discuss it at a future meeting, um, which we still, like we will do. That's up to the author of the amendment. Uh, but we did vote affirmative last week to discuss this as part of our committee of the whole. So this discussion doesn't need to necessarily result in a vote. The vote is not a decision on the amendment, it's just, um, but I would agree with Commissioner Ellenboss, the absence of the author, it's really not necessary to debate this because they're not here to speak to the words of the amendment.
Didn't we not discuss it already though, but then during the, at the end of that discussion, moved to push the vote off?
It's, we had a committee of the whole about this and amendment nine already. So it isn't that we haven't discussed it.
Right.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying we haven't had the discussion in a meeting where we can vote on it. Because committee of the whole, you can't make a final decision. Um, so agreeing with Commissioner Ellenboss, um, that debating it in this context just doesn't really make sense. Um, so we do have a motion. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief, uh, just very much echoing the concept that it seems that the sponsor is not currently available to defend the, the value of work. I, I stating for the record as well that, that, you know, is not currently in a form that I would be comfortable recommending it to, to voters. I would not, certainly not be comfortable giving an A G pass recommendation within, uh, this commission. I believe that, uh, salary is not something that I am comfortable with. But I believe I would be more comfortable with the concept of stipends in alignment with general law. Um, but for this motion, I, you know, I'm not comfortable giving it an explicit do not pass recommendation.
Commissioner Muchler, is that, uh, is your hand up again?
All right.
Okay. Yeah, um, seeing no further discussion, uh, staff, could you please color roll? Colton Colton Bell?
Abstained.
Brad Kelly?
Yes.
Maya Morales? Don Muchler?
Yes.
Hannah Ordos?
Yes.
Joel Fitzjordan?
No.
Andrew Reading?
Yes.
Jessica Reinstra?
No.
Rob Stone?
Yes.
Jennifer Wright?
No.
Don Chadwick?
Yes.
Aman Collins?
No.
Liz Darrow?
No.
Joe Ellenboss?
Yeah.
Lindsey Graham, Ellenboss?
Yes.
It was about changing the one?
Yes, I've changed to, you know.
Okay. Um, that motion passes eight to six with one excuse. Um, are there any additional? Oh, so at this point, we need a motion to leave the committee.
So moved.
Any, hang on, your seat's not the end meeting. Okay, is there any objections to do enough, I can shut this.
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Most. Okay, are there any additional items from commissioners doing at the next meeting? The next meeting will be on Thursday, June twelfth at six P M. This is important, the meeting's at the Waukegan County Courthouse over there. I'm here, you'll leave all by yourself.
Who's gonna bring cookies?
Who is gonna bring cookies? Mr. Kelly?
Sure, yep.
Yay, thank you. Um, hey, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second. Second. Are there any votes? Somebody say hi.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned and I can be a